All right, we're gonna start with 3.1, The Pledge of Allegiance, with a very good-looking Kennedy crew. All right, Jim Millard.
Ooh, I'm getting feedback. Oh, closer. Geez, I usually never have that problem. Thank you, President Michelle Hayworth. It's my pleasure to introduce to you the principal of Kennedy Elementary School, Jennifer Fanning. Principal Fanning has been in education for 26 years and four of those years as a principal of Kennedy Elementary. Jennifer has taught in the Janesville School District for 18 years. She has taught at Jefferson as a third and a fourth grade teacher, Monroe and Adams as a talented and gifted resource teacher, and many summer and various elementary schools, Edison Middle School, JSOL, and has a head summer school teacher at Kennedy. For five years between teaching and returning to Kennedy, Jennifer was the principal of McLennigan?
McLennigan.
Oh, good. Elementary School, and then at Cunningham Intermediate School in Bloay. Ms. Fanning has earned a Bachelor's of Science in Elementary Education from UW-Stevens Point, a Master's of Arts in Teaching from Aurora University, her principal licensure and curriculum and instruction licensure from Aurora University. Jennifer, who do you have with you tonight?
Thank you, Commissioner Millard, and thank you, Board members, for having us here tonight. I have brought some wonderful leaders here from Kennedy. I'm excited to introduce Blaze Brandonberg. He is a fifth grader in Mr. Russert's class and is missing a little bit of his football game to be here tonight to say the pledge with us. One of our leaders at school and last year a student council member. And you intend to run again this year, Blaze, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful, good. Also, I have Amelia Bongard, who's also a fifth grader. She's in Ms. Green's class this year. She's also one of our leaders at Kennedy, was a student council member last year and also planning to run this year?
Yes.
Fantastic. And Sadie Lowe. Sadie is a fifth grader. She's also in Mr. Russert's class this year, a school leader, our student council leader last year, and planning to run this year as well, too.
Yeah.
Oh, fantastic. So we have wonderful Kennedy rockets here representing us tonight, and they feel so very fortunate to be part of this, so thank you for welcoming us tonight. Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's true. Or me.
Show that to Mr. Holsman as you walk by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, that was great. Thank you. All right, consider a motion to adopt the agenda for September 12th, 2023. Motion made by Kevin, seconded by Liz. Liz, guys, we just, okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes eight-zero. Commissioner Arteri is not able to be with us tonight. Safety message, Kathy.
Thank you very much. I want to talk about motorcycling, and we've got some days remaining. Yeah, a lot of people motorcycle this time of year. There are some extra hazards that we need to be aware of. Some motorcyclists will ride until it snows. I am not one of them. But it's important to remember that, you know, it's starting to get darker, and motorcycles are very hard to see. And because they have a low profile and there's a single headlight, and so we can just, as drivers all around, just need to be aware that there are people still on the road on motorcycles. And as you're taking care of your lawn, if you can do what you can to keep debris out of the, off of the street, you know, as you're mutation. And that's, that's for general motorists. For bikers, I Make sure you check the weather. Wet conditions can become icy conditions very quickly, and of course, that means you'll have trouble stopping. And dress appropriately. You should have extra clothes with you at this time of year, because when the temperature drops, it might start out a beautiful day, and then it drops suddenly, and you might not realize that wind and rain basically suck the warmth out of you and could cause low-level hypothermia, which will, of course, dull your reaction time on your bike. And finally, always wear a helmet. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good reminders. Okay, citizen comments, we have none. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, approval to
Motion for approval.
Motion made by Kevin, seconded by Jim. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes eight-zero. Thank you. Board items, 5.1, Parker Arts Academy monthly, so if any schools or programs have something you want us to see, we are, we do at least one a month, right? And this came about, what's that? Yeah, we don't have any schedules yet, so get on our calendar. We would love it, but we were so impressed with this program, we're like, you have to come tell the board about all these exciting opportunities that you give our kids. So I give you Ms. Jan Knudsen.
Thank you. All right. I'm so happy to get an opportunity to speak with you tonight about the Parker Arts Academy and the benefits for our students here in Janesville. Down. There we go. I'll get it. We are so grateful to the Hendrix Foundation for the three-year grant that began this program and made it possible. We are transitioning to the district this fall. The first year of the grant in 2020 to 21 was for planning and developing curriculum. Since the Parker Arts Academy opened in the fall of 2021, we have served nearly 100 students. We're community. This fall, we have 55 students enrolled in the program. Ten of these students are from out of the district. It's interesting to note that the first year of enrollment, we had district. The second year, there were 10, and this year, we have 10 again. There are also several families of PAA students who have moved to Janesville and purchased homes in our school district. The breakdown of our classes are, this year, we have 17 freshmen, 13 sophomores, 17 juniors, and eight seniors. There we go, oops. Okay. I guess there's, I don't know, some of the slides, they, in the format, I didn't download correctly, so I may have to skip around here a little bit. Anyway, I'm the, I'll introduce you to our staff. I'm the coordinator. Help? Oh, there, all right. Colin Swanson is our Dejean Kirkland is our dance teacher. Abby Goodhall is a choir vocal teacher. Matt Knudsen is a choir vocal teacher of our district. And now I'd like to go on and talk a little bit more about the anyway, I wanted to tell you what a day of, in the life of a PAA student looks like. Half of their day is a regular student's enrollment in classes. They have their math, science, social study, and English, whether that is the, the regular grade level class, an honors class, or an AP class, we make sure that that is a part of their schedule. The other half of their day involves the PAA classes. As a freshman student, we'll take the, students will take theater studio or acting 1, 2, 3. They take dance, and alongside that, in the second semester, it will be freshman seminar or health or personal finance. And they also have room for elective, an elective. Anyway, so now, back on to some of the opportunities that we have. Is a play, and we did SpongeBob the Musical, which was a lot of fun, and Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Coat, which was an outstanding musical award winner for the Jerry Awards at the Overture Center. We thought we had a great season. As we had was Stage Combat with Orion Kooling. He is from the Chicago area and worked with our cast from She Kills Monsters, but also with all of the students in the PAA. They learned a lot about how to make these things look real and be very safe about it. There's a poster of the She Kills Monsters cast. We had a contemporary ballet workshop with Lanai Wilkerson from the Cincinnati Ballet Company. The life of a professional dancer is something not all students knew about, and we learned a lot about that journey. During Latin Heritage Month, we had a Latino heritage dance with Carlice Kelly, who is a performing artist, choreographer, teacher in the Milwaukee area. And she brought some wonderful costumes with her, and I think it helped everyone get into the true spirit of the day. We try to make use of opportunities of yearly field trip to see a national Broadway tour. This, last year, we were fortunate to see Hades Town, which is, was a Tony Award-winning musical. We had a voiceover actor and Twitch streamer, Eric Lawrence. He has a show on Twitch called Shadow Temple. He works with AFMAO, which I confess, I did not know a lot about, but the students all did. Via Zoom, we had a costume design masterclass. Sailor Small is a costume designer in the Portland, Oregon area, and after her presentation, students began work on a project designing costumes, and they received feedback on their designs. Also by Zoom, they had a masterclass with Katie Evans, an award-winning playwright, who discussed her writing and production process with the students. We try to bring a lot of writing skills and creative writing into our area, too, and so this was a wonderful opportunity for that. We had a hip-hop dance workshop with Victoria Isaacs, who is a Milwaukee and Chicago-based freelance artist, and they were pretty tired. Dance concert for students to showcase what they learn in their dance classes, the different styles, and some of the dances they created as, as well as being choreographed. In the Choral Area, we have masterclasses with world-renowned collegiate choirs. We've had the Luther College Nordic Choir, the University of Michigan Men's Glee Club, and with that experience, our students gave a concert with them, the UW-Plattville Chamber Choir, and the UW-Milwaukee Concert Corral. At these masterclasses, the students have the opportunity to hear the choir, work with the collegiate conductor, and then we try to combine on a piece so they get to sing alongside the collegiate singers, which is a great experience for everyone. A concert for the community in which our students performed with them, and then the following day, they gave a master especially for students as they prepare for auditioning for college programs. Each, on alternate years, we go to New York City with our program, and in the spring of '22, we had a masterclass with John Edwards. I don't know if any of you recognize him, but he began his professional career here in Janesville at the Armory Dinner Theater. And so we were fortunate to see him in MJ the Musical. He gave a really inspiring masterclass about working toward your goals and how to reach them, and then performed for us, which was fantastic. Our other masterclass on that trip was with the Broadway, Disney, and Netflix composer, Christopher Curtis. He was, is the composer of Chaplin the Musical, which we presented in 2020. The second weekend was the weekend that we, the pandemic actually shut us down. But conversation with Christopher Curtis in, while we were preparing this musical, and then he agreed to do a masterclass for us in New York City, and then he went to dinner with us. And one of the things that I really noted about him was how interested he was in the students, and he talked with many of them. And that led us to what is happening this year for us. We are going to give the world premiere of Christopher Curtis's new musical, Scrooge's Romance. Christopher has long wanted to do a holiday musical that would be suitable for high schools and communities. There just aren't that many of them, and so he really enjoyed our students and the mission of our program here at the Parker Arts Academy. And so he is teaming with Jim Like, who is from Milton, a local playwright. A lot of his plays are performed and they'll be continuing this week. The book is not finished yet, but we know a lot about the those characters and the events that affected them. It's going to be presented on November 30th through December 10th, and I really hope you won't miss it. We're so excited about these opportunities and, and for students to get to work with this material and workshop it, take the updates, and get to work with Christopher Curtis and Jim Like. I, it's awesome. Our full season for the year is Scrooge's Romance. In January, we'll do the play Steel Magnolias, and then we're going to end with Lot of Fun with Shrek the Musical in April. So I thought I'd give you a little snapshot into where some of the graduates of our program are. And this, in the last two years, graduates have enrolled in performing arts programs at Carthage College, Millikan University, New York University, the Tisch School of the Arts, Oakland University, Oklahoma City University, UW-Stevens Point, and UW-Milwaukee. Other graduates of the program have gone on to study careers in the fields of their choice with confidence, good work habits, the ability to work independently and collaboratively, and the drive to achieve excellence in all that they do. We know that not all of these students who are enrolled in our program are going to go into the performing arts, but the skills that they learn there are going to support them in whatever they choose to do in life after our school, Parker High School and the Parker Arts Academy. I brought two of our Parker Arts Academy students to share a few of their experiences, because I think hearing from them firsthand will really give you another dimension to what this program and Jacob Schmeling, a junior.
I'm a senior and one of the torchbearers for the Parker Arts Academy at Parker High School, as well as the current, as well as the current president of Cantorum Choir.
Vice president of Cantorum Choir and a junior in the Parker Arts Academy.
Although we both wear many hats, the Parker Arts Academy, which we fondly call the PAA, is truly a special one. This is because of the evident growth fostered by the educators in the PAA. With their support, we've been able to soar to unforeseen heights.
We've not only grown as performers onstage, but also as people in our community. The Parker Arts Academy opened us up to the many local opportunities previously unknown to us, including productions at the Janesville Performing Arts Center, opportunities to perform at the Janesville Women's Club, the Elk Lodge, and tours to the local schools, and multitude of concerts in the area, and so much more.
Along with all of these amazing opportunities outside of school, we've been granted abilities to grow within our school and classes. With the ability to take acting, dance, and choir classes daily, along with weekly voice lessons to grow and develop our individual voices, the staff has also opened up a multitude of master in the Broadway musical MJ, three dance masterclasses, and a masterclass with Broadway stars Josh Young and Emily Paget, as well as so many more.
We are also fortunate enough to have a masterclass in New York with Broadway writer Christopher Curtis. Little would we know that just two short years later, we would be working on a world premiere with the Broadway songwriter, along with a local playwright. Along with the ability to perform so often, they also opened us up to the world of getting reviewed and challenging us with the ability to win awards. These past two years as members of the PAA and many years before the PAA, students, including Abby and I, were able to have a show win Outstanding Musical for the Jerries, which allowed us to perform on the Overture Center stage, a highly coveted opportunity by high school theater kids all over the state. It's these experiences that make our high school experience so memorable.
With that in mind, thank you all for supporting the arts in Janesville, and we can't wait to see you again onstage and in the community very soon.
We are forever indebted to our community for opening the doors to Parker and for us and allowing us to perform. So thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you again. About the students' educational experience and performance opportunities. Students and parents recognize the benefits that students are receiving from study in the PAA. Community members recognize the high level of performance that our students are achieving. And all students are connecting these experiences that change and enrich their lives. I, too, thank you for supporting us and the arts in our community. Thank you again.
We are very lucky to have you guys in the performances, and so we're lucky to have you. We're thankful. All right, Janesville Way Forward, 5.2 by Mr. Holsman.
Thank you very first month or so I was in Janesville, I had an opportunity to go to the summer musical. Oh, I think it was Grease. Then they came and said, wow, those kids are amazing, so keep up the great stuff.
Thank you.
I just want to kind of give the board an update on our strategic plan. We sent out communications invitations to parents and some community members and are now compiling kind of an organizational list. We're scheduled to meet two weeks from yesterday, the 25th of September, at Marshall Middle School. Right now, what we're doing is kind of organize the individuals who have articulated that they're interested. We're at about 85, which is awesome, right? Not sure how we're gonna manage 85, so we might have to pare it down a little bit, which is a little bit unfortunate, but I'm not sure. So what we're trying to do is then we're going down to families, and we have some folks who are retired and some business hopeful, trying to get all of those pieces in place. Our goal is to communicate early next week, thank you and your interest. So, I mean, that's outstanding. We really have a lot of people. I'm gonna try to move that number from 50 to a little bit larger, so we don't have to reduce that or try to think a little bit about how we can help other people be involved. What I would say from the board's perspective, as, as I had a meeting with our, our support group, Donovan Group, early this week, is they did say that it would always a great idea for board members, if you're not going to be members, to be observers at times. So I would just say, you're always welcome. The first one is the 25th, from 6 till 8, and if you have the ability to just stop by and watch, or come a little early, or come in the middle, or leave, at any time, you're always welcome. And what we would just do is post the meeting as a business, and, you know, no board action's gonna take it at that time. So I thought I'd just make sure that I articulated to all of you that you're all welcome and at any time to observe. That's always a great opportunity and idea. So we are well on our way. We are now, I have a meeting on Monday of next week. I met this week. We have kind of the agenda set for the upcoming week and who's gonna say what and how we're gonna do that. The director team and I are going to present a small piece to the entire group about kind of the state of the state, like who we are as a district and where we're at, similar to the activity that we did here with the board, just to make sure that everybody kind of understands where we are on common ground. The goal would be that we would have four meetings, and from there, maybe we need to have some subcommittees. We talked about that. Group will likely meet with some student stakeholder groups, as opposed to bringing more, so that the 85 has no students in it yet. So I think we just thought public support, a lot of support from the board and our administrative team, teaching staff, et cetera. And the report will be the day after the meeting, so we'll just keep this on as a five-minute kind of update on what's going on, and then if there's anything more specific, I'll provide you with an email or update and a commissioner's report.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Moving on to item six, Legislative Committee Report by Commissioner Myers.
Thank you very much. So on August 23rd, we had a meeting with our local representatives attending, were Representative Shutt and Jacobson and Conley, and, and Superintendent Holsman is there. We had several of our directors were there, and Commissioner Dahmerhausen and Millard were there. If you wanted to watch the, the meeting, it's available on our YouTube channel. And our purpose was to have a substantive conversation with our legislators to discuss recent legislation and the challenges of that and for future conversations. So we talked quite a long time about the recent legislation on literacy, and it was a, a chance for our directors to talk, you know, with the legislators about the things that, questions that they had. We looked for clarification about like the number of, about the reading coaches and the number of reading coaches available, you know, provided, the number provided
report will be the day after the meeting. So we'll just keep this on as a five-minute kind of update on what's going on. And then if there's anything more specific, I'll provide you with an email or update in the commissioner's report.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Moving on to item six, Legislative Committee Report by Commissioner Myers.
Thank you very much. So on August 23rd, we had a meeting with our local representatives. Attending were Representatives Shut and Jacobson and Conley. And, and Superintendent Holsman is there, we had several of our directors were there. And Commissioner Dahmerhausen and Mallard were there. If you wanted to watch the, the meeting, it's available on our YouTube channel. And our purpose was to have a substantive conversation with our legislators to discuss recent legislation, and are the challenges of that, and for future conversations. So we talked quite a long time about the recent legislation on literacy. And it was a, a chance for our directors to talk, you know, with legislators about the things that, questions that they had. We looked for clarification about like the number of, about the reading coaches, and the number of reading coaches available. You know, provided, the number provided per CISA division, which is only three. The reading program that we use, and the tests that might be involved in this. We, we express concern that efforts to improve our, we, we already have efforts to improve literacy in this district. It's been a focus for, for some time. These things, of course, all cost time and money. And we are curious as to how well these measures will to be reimbursed for all of our work. And so I think that like, a lot of things were brought up that our representatives hadn't had a chance to consider. And to no fault of their own, they wouldn't have necessarily any reason to understand these things or to know these things. And, and I think that we learned a lot from them, and we, and they learned a lot from us. We discussed things like the FORT test that some teachers are having difficulty with. We discussed licensure issues. There's a lack of flexibility when it comes to filling positions due to the way that teachers are licensed. And we discussed the needs of student teachers. There's a lack of financial support that may be an obstacle for people interested in the profession, which of course is important as we are, you know, facing teacher shortages. We discussed the archaic September 1st start date. We did express, by the way, a lot of gratitude to our representatives about the fact that you know, that there was interest in doing more for education. And, and of course, you know, there was a recent increase to special ed funding, but we wanted to let them know that while we were grateful for that increase, I think it was what, two, three percent, something like that? The district still uses $12 million out of its Fund X to fund special education. And we also talked about stuff that they might not know that's happening at the ground level. The fact that there, while there are not only more special ed students these days, but the, there's a complexity in the needs of special ed students that they might not be aware of. We discussed healthcare costs and the possibility of a healthcare cooperative to help manage those costs. And we discussed the way that we might encourage students with aspirations toward education. Again, and we'll probably get together again in the spring and have, have more conversations. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for leading that committee. Yeah, that September 1st, oh, like if I start on a Friday, because it got me thinking, have we done the 24-25 calendar yet? No, oh, thank goodness, all right. And I see Monday, September 2nd is, Monday is September 2nd, so we can't. Yes. So the 3rd is likely, but I was like, man, I blame myself almost that we missed that. All right. Thank you, Kathy, that was really good. All right, future meeting dates and times. Denise?
The Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting will meet on Tuesday, September 18th. I think that's the correct date, yes. At 4:00 PM here at the Educational Services Center. And then our next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, September 26th at 6:00 PM. Our regular board meeting.
And sorry, I think it's September 19th for FBG.
It is the 19th, okay, thank you.
Yep.
It didn't look right.
Yeah, I thought we actually had the idea, we could see the secured pathways and the works done in the maintenance room at Monroe. And then maybe even Marshall, walk across the parking lot and go see Marshall, too. There's a lot of work that was done there, completely new entrance. I haven't even gotten to Kennedy yet, I live next door. Why don't you invite me, Fanny? Okay. All right. Okay, with that, we are adjourned, thank you.